Okay, I think it's 7:30 and you want to unmute? You just gotta unmute Anne. The sound. Yeah, we can't hear you. Oh, is Chris? Chris Pelizzi, can you unmute everyone?
Everyone's unmuted. She just has to do it.
Okay, Anne, you just have to unmute on your own.
Bottom left corner.
Just bear with us, now you at.
There you go, Anne, I think you're good, Anne.
Okay, thank you if not. Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
You can't see me.
No, we can see you too.
Oh, I just can't.
We're firing on all cylinders.
Okay, so we will, well, welcome everyone into our meeting tonight. I'm glad you can see me, I can't see anybody else. So, welcome to our board meeting tonight. Before we start, I just want to thank our Nannuette community for passing our budget. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And for re-electing our three incumbents, myself, Ed Dingman, and Lynn Farme. Thank you, Nannuette. You really came through, we passed it to 75% vote. Andrea D'Abellier will talk about the vote later on in our meeting, but thank you so much for doing that. First up on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. If, if a board member, when you do a minutes, please make your name known, thank you. A motion for approval of minutes, please.
Sarah, I'll move it.
Thank you, Sarah, move second by. Who seconded, I'm sorry? Adrian? Seconded, anybody have any questions or additions, deletions on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The minutes are carried. Now, before we start our, our, our regular meeting, I, I would like to call for a moment of silence for all those who have died or have been ill due to COVID-19. Thank you very much. We need to acknowledge and thank all the people that have been on the front lines. Our doctors, our nurses, our EMTs, our other healthcare professionals, our grocery store staff, our pharmacy staff, and all who are helping during this crisis. Now, there's a huge sigh of relief going around in Nannuette, not only because we passed our budget, because we finished our school year last Friday on June the 12th. So, we have to thank our students and we have to thank their parents for their perseverance in distance learning. We know that it was very hard, but you guys are troopers and you really have did an excellent job with our students in trying to balance both your own work life and your, and our students' work life. To our teachers who had to do electronic learning, you know, over a weekend. Thank you, thank you for your encouragement and your helping our students continue to learn. And you've been awesome, you've been above and beyond the call of duty. So, thank you, thank you for all that you have done. To our nurses, thank you for helping out in the childcare for our emergency responders. It was extremely helpful that they didn't have to worry about their little ones when they were in your care. To our cafeteria staff who will continue to prepare food for our children who were in need. Thank you, thank you for taking the task on and doing it really well. Thank you to our custodians for not only just cleaning our buildings as they always do, but for disinfecting them well. Thank you, thank you for that. And thank you for our central office staff under the leadership of Dr. McHale for their absolutely amazing leadership during this last four months. And to our Board of Education who have been stalwart, continued supporters of everything that's going on in Nannuette. Thank you, Board, for doing what you are doing. You know, and we know that these were trying and still are trying times, but we, we are resilient. And hopefully with everyone abiding by the rules, staying safe, socially distancing, and wearing masks and washing your hands, the worst is over for us. To the class of 2020, this has been certainly an interrupted year for you and we are very proud of all the things that you have accomplished. You know, not only in the classroom, but in the music department and on the stage, in the arts, in the community, and in the sports arena. And your class really have been the leaders in our high school. And we're sorry that your year has to be interrupted, but I'm very excited that we're going to have in live graduation and Dr. McHale will talk more about that in his report. So, to the class of 2020, we wish you Godspeed and, and well in your future endeavors, whatever they may be. And to the rest of our students, thank you, thank you for, for being as wonderful as you are. We all missed seeing you and having you in our classrooms and noisy hallways. We want you to have a wonderful, relaxing summer and we want you to be ready to hopefully be back full-time in the fall. So, next on our agenda is a very wonderful thing to do and that is a recognition of our PTA volunteers. Just have to say, the PTA really has been our, our partners. They've been our partners in virtually everything that we do. And they're true partners because they actively participate in our school district. Very active in each of our schools, doing wonderful things for our students and our faculty. And we couldn't really do what we do without your support and without, without your participation. So, to the PTA and all the PTA members, thank you, thank you so much for all that you have done for all of our children. First up is the elementary PTA of Sue Fresh, Sue?
Yes, good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to talk about the elementary PTA this evening. The elementary PTA with Andrea Hauser, President, Antonette Hauser, Vice President, Hyview, and Kristin Cohen, Vice President. You know, research shows us that parents that are involved in their children's education, the children do better. I'd also have to say that people who role, who are role models for their children and volunteer help make our communities better. And you do both through your cultural arts and your book fairs and your PTA scholarships, your fundraisers, and so many other things. Children come into the room, would come into the room saying, oh, today's our book fair or we have a special something today. You have no idea how you have impacted our children over the years. And I personally, along with the board, would love to just say thank you for everything that you do and continue to do, not only the presidents, but all those other people behind you. And we know there are many of you, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Lynn Farme for the middle school.
Hi, everyone, I echo what Sue says to the PTA and all of the, the volunteers, the moms, the dads, and sometimes their older brothers and sisters. So, in my experience, the PTA has always been and always made school a, a better place for our children and for our community. So, I'd like to thank Tanya Blum, the President of the Bar PTA, and also both Vice Presidents, Donna Aquino Delia and Manushka Montemunho. So, for all of your hard work from spiritware to book fairs, it's definitely appreciated. And thank you so much for everything that you've done, your dedication. It truly means the world to our, our night community and we're grateful, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Lynn. For our high school PTSA, Ed Dingman.
I froze up there. On behalf of the Board of Education, the Nannuette School Community, myself as a parent of two high school students, I'd like to say thank you to the Nannuette High School PTSA, co-presidents Rosa Alessi and Allison Prote and the Vice President is Beverly Huff. Thank you for everything. Unfortunately, this year was cut short and we didn't get to celebrate with the senior breakfasts and the project graduation, which everybody looks forward to. But unfortunate circumstances led to, you know, a shortened school year. But I want to thank you very much for everything that you've done and, and everybody on your board. I know you work so hard and hopefully next year is a whole new beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Next is our PTA Council, Adrian.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'd like to acknowledge our PTA Council for their outstanding partnership and collaboration. They do so much to enhance our ability to serve as a school district and advocate for our children and our families. The commitment and dedication, not just for that, but for our children's educational success, health and wellbeing, especially during such difficult times, it's never been, you know, more important. They've all done so by also keeping an element of accountability with the principles of the actual PTA Council. So, for that, congratulations. I just want to point out, you know, particularly thank our PTA Council President Maureen Nicolich and our Vice President Patricia Cesario in particular. I needed to write a little bit of something about them in particular because they're just so special, near and dear to me. Maureen Nicolich is one of the most extraordinary community volunteers that I've ever come across. She is truly a leader who makes things happen and she seems like she's everywhere. In one day, you might see her at the schools and another at the Little League fields and especially her favorite, the Nannuette Outdoor Education Center. She's been a true champion. Being a proud mom of three and her eldest daughter just graduating and moving on to her next chapter, she serves on Meals on Wheels as well. And she's really just very, very well-equipped to help us with, with us as our crazy parents. She holds a degree in psychology, so it kind of keeps everybody in line. So, all of these things in more explain why she's just such a phenomenal PTA Council President. And I wanted to share a little picture of this I came across today, which actually looked like her sitting on the park bench of the Outdoor Education Center. What it says is, don't ask me to raise more money because you know I'll do it. In particular, I want to just acknowledge Trish Cesario very quickly. She's also a team player and shows up really whenever we need her. She does everything and anything to help us succeed. She's a nurse, she's a mom, she's adept at recognizing what the needs are and she jumps in and she pitches in whenever we really need it. She's actually put countless of hours working side by side with Maureen and the rest of the council. And again, she's, she's just been extraordinary. And I also found a little something like this because she's got many children as well in the school district. This says, Mom, you're so popular, it was unanimous when I volunteered you to be the head of the team fundraiser. There's one of her kids, I could envision them bursting in the front door of her house. So, anyhow, I just want to thank the entire board for keeping it, the lines of communication open for all of us, coordinating all three PTA units, it can be very challenging, I'm sure. But we're so fortunate to have you all on board as part of a, a unit. You promote our children, our programs, and you support us as a wonderful Nannuette school district. So, thank you so much.
Right, thank you very much, Adrian. I was thinking that most of us who sit on Boards of Education, in fact, throughout New York State, if you look at New York State, who sits on boards, have come through the PTA. And that's where we first started, when our first, first child went into kindergarten and we got involved in, in the kindergarten registration. And that's where it all started for almost all of us who sits on Boards of Education. So, so thank you, thank you for our PTAs, for all they do for our children and our parents and our faculty. Because those, I mean, we hear about those wonderful breakfasts you do and Teacher Appreciation Day. So, thank you, thank you for everything that you do for our kids. We could not do it with better partners than you guys, so thank you so much. Now, next up on our agenda is our consent agenda. I need a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
Ed, I'll move it.
Ed, move by Ed, second, please.
Sue will second.
Sue will second, thank you very much. I just have one thing taken out of the agenda, the approval of the agreement with CBIZ, Mario. There were options under the, under the proposal. Are we approving all of those options that were in the proposal that you sent us?
Yes, some are paid for by nicer, I believe, and, and we add on options so that we inventory all of our equipment and, equipment.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, I need, everybody in favor of the consent agenda? Opposed? It is Carrie. Okay, next up on our agenda is Certified Personnel, Dr. Fox.
Sure, we resolved that Allison Kern, Teaching Assistant in the Nannuette School District, be granted an extended leave of absence for the 2020-2021 school year.
Motion, please.
Lynn, I'll move it.
Christine, Christine and?
Lynn.
And Lynn. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is Carrie.
Resolved that Allison Kern be appointed to the position Regular Substitute Special Education Teacher in the Nannuette School District effective 9/8/20 to 6/26/2021.
Motion, please.
I'll move it, Adrian.
Moved by Adrian.
Sue will second it.
Seconded by Sue, anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is Carrie.
Resolved that Donna Burgling be appointed to the position Teaching Assistant in the Nannuette School District for a probationary appointment in the Teaching Assistant tenure area effective 9/1/20 to 9/1/24.
Motion, please.
Ed, I'll move it.
Ed moves it second by.
Lynn.
Lynn, anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is Carrie. I have one item under this and it's, I got, I received a letter to the Nannuette Board of Education. I'd like to read the letter. I would like to thank the Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to work for the last 32 years as the Associate Principal of the A. McGotha Bar Middle School and as the Director of Athletics. I am proud to be a member of the Nannuette community and family. The time that the Board spends in making, I'm sorry, making your difficult decisions is a credit to your wisdom and integrity. All of you have dedicated your expertise in making the Nannuette School District a class act. I am truly grateful for your, for your continued support over the years and leave with mixed fond memories. God bless and thank you again sincerely, Frank Mazzucco. I want to thank Frank for not, not only his 32 years in Nannuette, but his 50 years totally in, in education. Thank you, Frank. Thank you for all of the, all of the years that you have devoted to our children, not only in the middle school, but once you became athletic director, our kids from seven through 12. Thank you, thank you for all of those wonderful things that you have now been part of our family. Our dinners have become spectacular under your leadership, so thank you very much for that. And we wish you well in your retirement and enjoy those times that you'll now have to play golf, etc. So, thank you very much, Frank.
Frank was also an Assistant Principal at Miller for a short period of time.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
He was actually, he was actually my, one of my favorite judges for our mock trial, that Little Red Riding Hood, you know, versus the Big Bad Wolf. And he helped us out that year, he has many hats, Frank, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Sue, yes, thank you very much. Next up, under budget transfers, Mr., Mr. Spagnolo.
Be resolved that the Nannuette Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated June 17th, 2020 in the amount of $73,098 for the general fund.
Motion, please. Sorry, I'll have to do it again.
Christine.
I, I don't see faces because I have no screen, so you'll have to speak up, who's moving that?
Christine.
Christine's moving, who's second?
Sue.
Sue's second, anybody have any questions on the budget transfers? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's Carrie. The next up is our professional development plan, Dr. Fox.
Yes, so this is an annual, we review this every year, it's an annual resolution. So, I'll read the resolution. Resolve that pursuant to Section 100- Resolve that pursuant to Section 102 of the New York State Commissioner of Education's Rules and Regulations, school districts are required to certify that their school district has complied with their professional development plans for the school year 2019-2020 and have professional development plans in place for the upcoming school year and attached the PD Plan for 2020 to 2024.
Great, thank you. I need a motion, please.
Ed, I'll move it.
That's moved by Ed.
Sarah, I'll second it.
Seconded by Sarah. I just have one question, Meredith, on that. Could you show us or send us each each of the buildings graduate profiles?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is carried. The next up on our on our agenda is the Annual Review of the District's Tobacco-Free School Environment Policy, 1530.
Okay, so this is another annual, we do this every year. There are no recommended changes to this policy. We had a committee meet virtually to look at the policy. I just want to let you know that Mr. Valani had mentioned that what he, you probably read it in the memo. He made sure that all the signs around the district were replaced if they were in need of replacement. The good news is that Mr. Mahoney and Ms. DeGraw both report that our discipline is way down for kids vaping. So that's good from last year. So all the push, all the awareness campaigns, all the things that we've done with kids in health class, VASA, both in and at a district, honestly, because I know the county took this very seriously as well. It seems to be working. It seems that our kids are vaping less, and that's really good news. And the same is true of using, you know, typical tobacco products like cigarettes. So there's some good news there because I know vaping was a huge issue last year and the year before.
Yep, yep. Okay, I need a motion to for the annual review of the Tobacco-Free School Environment Policy, please.
I'll move it. Adrian?
Moved by Adrian?
Lynn, I'll second.
Lynn seconds it. One of the comments, like in when I was reading the policy, it was really nice to see not only was vaping down, but but smoking was also decreased from prior years. And I do believe, you're right, I do believe it's all a push that was made, not only in the health classes, but when this COVID-19 happened, they found that people who were vaping in the adult population were more seriously ill than those who were not vaping. So I think that also may have had an effect and I'm delighted because of the damage it does to one's lungs. So thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The policy is renewed. A second, next up is the Annual Review of Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy Number 1900.
Yes, so this is a relatively new annual review. This is a policy that was recommended by NISBA a couple of years back. So the last full review we did of this was 2017-18. And we did not do it last year because it was such a new policy, but we had quite a number of parents from several of our schools on this committee as well. We met via email virtually to go through this policy. I'm happy to report that everybody thought that this policy was well-written. It didn't require any major changes. The only piece that both the teachers, the parents, and the administrators talked about was in the parent compact. So there's a little minor change in there where we write about kids limiting the amount of television that they watch to now add screen time, video games, electronic devices. Parents, teachers, and administrators, as I said, all felt that we should sort of expand the definition of, you know, screen time from television. So it was a little bit antiquated. Even though it was a couple of years ago, you know, we've we've moved very far in in the screen time world. So the other piece is a lot of people had feedback about, you know, if we stay in the virtual space next year, you know, what is that going to look like for kids who receive Title I services? And that's obviously an ongoing conversation. And when we do our meetings, which each of the Title I buildings, they do an annual meeting with parents that'll all be addressed. Once we have an idea of what reentry will look like and whether we're going to be in virtual or not. So again, this is just an annual review of the policy. And I thank all the parents and all the the teachers and everybody who was involved in this. I know it's a busy time of year and I just, we really appreciate the feedback. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you very much. I need a motion, please, to accept the annual review.
Christine.
Sorry, who was that?
Sue. Sue, I'll move it.
Sue first, Sue first moved at who's seconds, please?
Christine.
Christine seconds. Anybody have any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Next up is our Superintendent's Report. Dr. McHale.
Okay, yes, thank you, Ms. Byrne. Before I talk about graduation and the different things that we have on the calendar, I do want to once again echo the board's gratitude and thanks to the community for the support of our budget for next year. You know, this is really a proud day in Nanuette and, you know, in a spring semester with a lot of trials and tribulations and a lot of difficult things. This is a night that I think we're all going to sleep sound. So thank you all for your support. I want to do a shout out to a bunch of particular groups that are our partners, our friends. They value the investment in our youth, in our community, as much as we do for being, you know, school people who, you know, do this for a living and have passion with supporting children are our community groups, our volunteers. It's fortuitous that tonight is our PTA celebration night as well. So the first group that I'd like to mention, of course, is our PTA, Maureen Nicolich and Patricia Cesario. Thank you, you know, thank you so much for your leadership and your partnership throughout this entire year and then particularly in the last couple of months and then with our budget vote and being, you know, advocates for children and for school service. So thank you so much. Our coupon group, thank you all, our Nanuette Chamber, our NTA, our Black and Gold Club, of course, our Board of Education, who are the volunteers and representatives of the community that that, you know, help field questions, talk to folks in the community, answer phone calls, answer emails about what the school is thinking of doing with our budget. So thank you all for being advocates and liaisons to the community and for this service. And of course, our Nanuette music partners, our Rotary, you know, I can go on and on. Nanuette is a small school community, smallest in Rockland County, but by far one of the tightest and proudest and strongest school communities that I know I've ever worked in. I've worked in a number of different school communities. So thank you all for supporting our budget. And what I can say, Superintendent, is that I promise you, we will do everything we can to continue doing the things we do really well, auditing and reflecting the things that we may have gaps and areas where we can grow and learn and and just continue to innovate and grow and be relevant and listen to the people that we serve so that we can be able to do. So thank you all. As far as graduation goes, we have a number of different events happening. One was kicked off just yesterday. If you follow social media, this is a big thank you to Supervisor George Holman, the Clarkstown Supervisor, for partnering with all the Clarkstown Superintendents. So it's, you know, it was myself, NIAC Schools, East Ramapo, Albertus, and Clarkstown Schools all came together, partnered with Supervisor George Holman and the Clarkstown Town Board to celebrate our 2020 graduates at the Congers Lake Boardwalk. It's beautiful. We did a ribbon cutting yesterday. Alex Nikot, our valedictorian, was right there front and center and cut the ribbon with the rest of the valedictorians from the county. So I just want to let everybody in the community know, if you're an Orange Town address, it doesn't matter, you know, as long as you you visit the the beautiful boardwalk in Congress and Clarkstown, you know, with your student ID, with your child and the student ID to take pictures or just take a look at all the graduates. You have full access to the beautiful Congress Lake all summer. So that's a wonderful gift from Supervisor Holman and from all the superintendents and all of our Board of Educations who came together to invest in that for our kids. Up next, you'll you'll receive information about this on the 24th. Our high school administration and our high school will be hosting the first ever graduation honk out. You can call it a clap out if you want, but we'll all be in cars and honking and cheering for our graduates. So there'll be a lot of information that comes out about that from Principal Mahoney, Assistant Principal DeGraw, to give you information on that. And we've invited our entire school district K-12 so that we can all all be in our cars wearing our black and gold as our, you know, our seniors parade through our campuses while we honk them out as symbolizing their drive through their path, their 13-year path here in Nanuette Schools. And then finally, I'm proud to say, and again, huge shout out to Principal Mahoney, Assistant Principal DeGraw, our new Athletic Director Phil Carbone, and Facilities Director Rudy Valani for working around the clock to make sure that we meet with our graduation committees, which have representatives of our students, our student council, parent groups, PTA groups. And they've all come up with a wonderful idea to have, now that the executive order allows it, four live graduations at the Jerry Leo Field, the famous Jerry Leo Field in Nanuette. This will be the first in a very long time that our students get to graduate on a football field. So maybe it'll be something that sticks. Maybe everything happens for a reason, who knows? Although we are unique with our tent, but so we will have four graduations in a row. Estimated around 45 minutes each, 50 students at a time with two guests. Social distancing will be in order. But but we're really excited about this opportunity. So that'll be coming up on the 26th. And we'll get more information out there to the community about the honk out and the live graduation. So I'm really, really proud, proud to say that. And then last, but certainly not least, for my announcement tonight, our budget vote, I know I've spoken about the challenges of this year, but many, you know, don't realize that, you know, Governor Cuomo has a very difficult job and, you know, he was faced with a tough decision of whether to to allow budget votes to just roll over or to go to to public vote. He made the decision to make them go to public vote and then they had to go through this process that has never been done before in the state of New York for schools where we have to 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 plan, promote, educate folks on how to participate in an absentee, a full absentee ballot election vote. And so Annie Dabollier, you know, my my right hand and our district clerk has, again, I keep using the word masterfully led this team. So she's done an amazing job, you know, that, you know, aside from our wonderful results that we're so happy, 75% of those who participated support next year's budget. You know, if that wasn't there, we'd still be celebrating the work of Annie Dabollier and her team. So thank you, Annie, for everything that you've done for the community members that participated. 2,641 of you that participated, I hope you benefited from our videos that our Junior Chamber put up on our social media. Chris Palizzi put a ton of stuff up on on our website to help people fill out these valid votes that have never been done before. We counted them by hand all day today, which again, has never been done before. So huge shout out to Annie, Jill Russo, Michelle Clemens, Maura Chafi, and Mario Spagnolo, who's the, who's in charge, is my superintendent of our business office, who runs that entire group. Thank you all. It's really, you know, the budget votes. It's so important that people understand how to vote so that there aren't hurdles put in front of people's voice. And in order for us to get the 1,982 yeses, we needed your work first. And it's absolutely clear that you've done a masterful job doing that. And so next year, all of our students, all of our teachers, all of our support staff, and all of our community will benefit from our budget that we proposed for the 2021 school year. So thank you all. It's really a pleasure to serve the school community. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. Next item on our agenda is unfinished business. And before we go to things that are written there, I do want to say that, and I mention it at every board meeting, please fill out your census. I know you see all the ads on television saying how important it is, but the money we get from the federal government and the representation we have in Washington comes from the number of people that live in the state of New York. If you're not counted, we lose federal money for a lot of things, education being one of them. And we lose representation in Washington, which is really key that we have representation for New York. So please fill out the census. There is, there is no way for anything to get back to anyone else. The census doesn't have any any questions on there that people might be afraid to answer. It's please, please, please fill out your census and get it back. I understand in New York State, we don't even have, I don't even think we're up to about 60% who have filled it out yet. That's a huge gap. So we have to make sure that we fill that gap and that people do do the census. Dr. McHale, do we have any public questions?
Yes, yes, we do. We had one great question that was posed to our to our unfinished business district Google Doc, again, reminding our community to please utilize that as a great place to speak your voice. The the question that came in this week was, will Nanuette Schools run a parallel distance platform while we also welcome children back into a brick and mortar experience and a traditional experience for families and students and perhaps staff that are either unwilling to return? There's compromised health and immune issues for for children. So that was the question that was posed. Will we run two parallel, you know, opportunities for for our community to learn at the same time and not so much look at it as an or more of an and? So I think that is, that's, it's a complex question. It's a good question. I'll start out, I'm gonna, Dr. Fox is gonna help me out. We're gonna answer this together as my Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. You know, she and I are both gonna field this question, but I think right now the best that that we can say is acknowledge that it is a very good question. It's a practical question. It's an honest question. It's something that's on our minds as well as we prepare for next year and our staffing and our conversations with our stakeholder groups. It is on one of the highest FAQ for the state of New York and the Department of Health and the Commissioner. And it's also a major part of our Rockland County Task Force. There's some talk about our Rockland County Reentry Task Force putting out a survey to all of our school districts in Rockland County to get a feel for the percentage of families that are either confirmed not returning upon choice to school next year or those that are still waiting to hear what the guidelines are going to be in schools, you know, as it relates to lunch and, you know, hallway, you know, activity and and before parents can make decisions about safety. So it's a question that, you know, I'm ill-equipped to answer 100% at this time because I don't have all of the information to pose a confident answer. But what I can say to that community member and other community members alike that are thinking the same thing is that we are, we are thinking of that question. We know it's an important aspect of our reentry. As I said, it's probably one of the top three bullets in our reentry mission is how do we educate all students with all situations? And some of those may be health and immune compromised family members or themselves returning to school. So that is definitely a discussion that we're going to continue to have. And hopefully throughout the summer, we can continue to release information, let families know what options Nanuette has and really what options public schools have in New York State from a larger field perspective. Dr. Fox, is there anything in particular that you'd like to add from your discussions with your group?
Yeah, you just hit it at the end there. We're anxiously awaiting some of these regional meetings to happen with the State Education Department because schools are waiting for guidance on, you know, what we're able to offer in terms of, you know, regulatory state ed stuff. But as you said, this is all on our minds. We're meeting as a group every week in the county. All the Assistant Superintendents for Instruction are meeting weekly. So we're having these conversations. We are aware that, you know, there are issues for families and we're trying to figure out ways to address all of them. So we're hoping the survey, if it if it happens, it will be soon. And as I said, we're waiting for some guidance from state ed to help us sort of navigate, you know, what we're going to be allowed to do in terms of our offerings.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fox. And thank you to the community member who posed that question. Again, to everyone else, you know, please utilize our district website, our Google Doc to ask questions. We know there's a lot of questions out there and, you know, as you can We know there's a lot of questions out there, and, you know, as you can see, we will be very frank and very honest. If, you know, we don't know the answers at this time, it seems like, you know, two weeks, two-week clips is when we learn new things in this current environment. So I'm trying to do my best as superintendent to be a good communicator, be transparent. So I will continue to do that and offer, you know, whether it be, you know, web videos over the summer of me giving updates, whether I send out a lot more K-12s, whether I, you know, update my section of the website and signal on social media for people to read new updates, whatever I learn that will benefit the community as we enter, again, an unprecedented challenge to, you know, reinvent schools so that families can get back to work, so children can come back to our schools safely. I will do that. So, so thank you for that question. But that's all we had, Mrs. Byrne, in terms of community questions.
One other thing, Mr. Spagnolo, we should have an audit committee meeting before the end of this, before June 30th. So if we could set that up, I do believe Ed's the chair of that committee. If we could set up an audit committee before the end of the school year, that would be great.
We can do it at the board's convenience.
Okay. So maybe, maybe you can, you and Ed can get together and get a date, and then we can have that meeting. Next up is a recommendation, recommendation to waive the second reading and approve the policy 6805, which is the policy on federal grant compliance procedures for payroll certification form.
Briefly, the federal government put in a requirement to implement policies for things we've been doing for the past at least 10 or 15 years, which is mainly when any employee who's on a grant receives their paycheck, they acknowledge that part of it is due to a grant. We've been keeping those records for years. This is just the policy that implements it, and it's something our order is recommended. So if the board would waive the first reading and implement it, that would be appreciated.
Okay. So I need, I need a motion to approve waiving the second reading and approving the policy 6805.
Christine, I'll move it.
Christine moves it, seconded by?
Sarah, I'll second it.
Seconded by Sarah. Anybody have any questions on this policy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Our next resolution is a resolution in support of state and federal support for public schools to prevent the COVID-19 shutdown from damaging education in New York State.
Okay, Mrs. Byrne, do you mind if I read this one?
I think that would be fine.
Okay, and I'm gonna read the whole thing because I think it's really important. So if you can all just bear with me, each line is really important. So rather than, so typically going to the now, therefore be resolved, it is important for our community to hear this resolution that our board is supporting. So whereas the state needs significant support from the federal government to help ensure the immediate continuation of important and essential services such as public education, whereas the federal-state partnership is the linchpin to responding and recovering from COVID-19 crises, whereas the state has the primary responsibility to fund public education, whereas Article 11, Section 1 of the New York State Constitution provides that the legislature shall provide for the maintenance and support of a system of free common schools wherein all the children of the state may be educated, whereas state courts have upheld that the state has the legal responsibility to provide proper funding for public schools, whereas the state, on average, provides less than 40% of the total revenue to school districts, whereas public school districts are owed over $3.8 billion in foundation aid for the 2021 school year, whereas the legislature is considering multiple proposals that will raise much-needed revenue for New York State, including increasing taxes on billionaires and multimillionaires. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nanuet Union Free School District requests that the elected leaders in the state of New York act to preserve education programs and related jobs to ensure that the COVID-19 crisis does not damage the quality of public education in our state. Resolve further that the Nanuet Union Free School District urges the state legislature to act and immediately pass legislation that will increase revenue before the end of the legislative session. Resolve further that we request the federal government to provide additional support to public education to assist states that have had revenue losses due to COVID-19 crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. So I need a motion, please.
Adrian, I'll move it.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by?
Sue, I'll second it.
Seconded by Sue. Anybody have any questions on this resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. I assume that we will be sending to all of our representatives this resolution, as well as our leadership at the federal level and at the state level. Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. And our friends in NICE that are doing the same.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Anybody on the board have anything under unfinished business that they'd like to bring Okay, we're going on to new business. Rockland County School Board Association, Christine.
So at our last meeting, we approved our new executive director is Maureen Danzig, who is actually a former executive director. She served for one year as Rockland County School Board's Executive Director, and she's a former school board member, and she's an educator. And so she has been approved as the new, and she'll take on the job as of July 1st.
Great. She'll be great. Thank you. Next is National School Board Association and New York State School Board Association. I received this afternoon from New York State School Board Association that 99.6 of budgets in the state of New York that didn't go over the cap passed, which is the highest percentage, I think, ever. I mean, we've been up there before, about 96, 97, but this was 99.6%. And that's absolutely remarkable, and thank you to the public for realizing the, I think, the importance of public education and the importance of making sure we educate each child well. So thank you for that. From the National School Board Association, the national has been, other than Betsy DeVos giving out lots of millions and millions of dollars to charter schools and charter school startups, et cetera, et cetera, the national is really not focusing at all on education because they have too many other things going on, COVID being just one of them. So there is, I have no news from that. The local government, does anyone have any news from any local government sources? Okay, we move on to the district clerk. I want to echo what Dr. McHale said, Annie Dablier, our district clerk, and her three extremely helpful helpers, Jill, Michelle, and Maura, and Mario, for the tremendous job that she has done to get this immense task of this ballot, this mail-in ballot. So thank you, Annie, for, the reason it went so smoothly is because of your leadership in this. So thank you very much. So I'll turn it over to you for certification of the vote.
Well, thank you. I'm so happy that it was a positive outcome for the district, and I really appreciate, of course, all the support and trust from Dr. McHale and the board. And also, I have to say, Mario, Chris, and Jill, Michelle, and Maura really were so helpful in these last, you know, crucial weeks especially. So it really helped everything go smoothly. So thank you. So I just have a summary that we usually share for the certification of the vote. We had a total of 2,641 votes cast in the 2020, 20, sorry, 2020, 21 budget vote by absentee ballot. Board members Ann Byrne, Ed Digman, and Lynn Fami were re-elected to three-year terms. The Nanuet Public Library budget also passed, and their trustee, Metta Rossi, was also re-elected to a five-year term. So good news all around.
Great. And we had 75% passage, which is, I think, probably for us, one of the highest percentages we've had. So that's great. Thank you. Thank you again, before we adjourn our meeting. Thank you again to the community of Nanuet. Thank you for getting out and making sure that you got those ballots back in so that we could have a positive outcome. We are feeling a great sense of relief and a great sense of gratitude for the community in Nanuet. We really are a very close-knit, very family-orientated community, and it's, it's really a pleasure to serve on a board in a community such as Nanuet. So thank you very much, everybody. Next item on our agenda is adjournment of meeting. I need a motion. Nobody wants to leave?
Sarah, I'll adjourn, move to adjourn.
Okay, Sarah, move, seconded by?
Wait, Ann, can I interrupt you for one second?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself because, and I do need a motion for the certification of a vote.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Andrea.
No, that's okay.
That's an important thing. Okay, let's back up. Well, we need a motion for certification of the vote.
Ann, I'll move it.
That's moved by Ed, seconded by?
Lynn.
Seconded by Lynn. Anybody have any questions on the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried.
Thank you.
And so now, a call for an adjournment was moved by Sarah, seconded by?
Lynn.
By Lynn.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we adjourned. Our last board meeting for the year, our next board meeting will be in July. Thank you, everybody. Have a very wonderful and safe summer. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great summer.
You.